Good evening, Port Wainimi, and welcome to a presentation of a city council forum for candidates running for the Port Wainimi City Council. I'm David Merron, a member of the League of Women Voters. We're delighted to have you with us. This is going out live and it will be recorded and posted on our website later. Tonight's program works with opening statements from each candidate. Then we take questions supplied by many of you when you register. And then we'll have closing statements at the end of the evening. Before we begin, I do want to ask, I do want to take the pleasure of introducing our league president, Betsy Patterson, for some introductory remarks. Betsy?
Good evening. I'm Betsy Patterson, current leader of the, or president of the League of Women Voters. And I'm joined by our mascot, Harry T. Byrne, Byrne, the voter bear. He's named after the young Tennessee legislator, who after receiving a letter from his mother, changed his nay vote to a yay vote, allowing Tennessee to become the 35th state to ratify the 19th amendment to the constitution. That was 100 years ago, and it granted women across our nation the right to vote. The League of Women Voters was established then in 1920 with the mission of encouraging civic engagement, which includes signing up new voters, educating voters about the candidates and the issues, and encouraging all citizens to vote. We hold the right to vote precious sense, as we know, not all people were given that right with the original constitution. The league is a nonpartisan political organization. We do not support or oppose any candidate or any political party. We do, however, support or oppose ballot propositions based on positions we have developed over the past 100 years. Each of us has a voice in our government, but only if we use our vote. To be informed voters, we must ask questions of our candidates and understand the pros and cons of the ballot propositions before we cast our vote. Harry T. Byrne and I want to thank you for joining us tonight, and we hope your questions are answered by the candidates and we all, and we want you to all vote. Good night.
Thank you, Betsy. We'll now begin with opening statements. Each candidate will have one and a half minute. We randomly drew numbers earlier. Our first candidate is Sonia Kim. When you're ready, Sonia, one and a half minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, League of Women, fellow candidates, our citizens of Port Wainimi. I want to thank God for illuminating my path on this journey. I registered as an entrepreneur nanny. I'm a mobile alteration specialist, respite provider, cosmetologist, consultant for Mary Kay, Senegence, and care for my boyfriend's eight and five-year-old. During my almost 20 years of living in Wainimi, I owned beach port cleaners, working long hours six days a week. Aside from running everyday operations at my store, I was also part of Seaside Walk HOA and approved budgets and oversaw operations on the property. I raised my three children who attended Wainimi Elementary, Eau Green, Wainimi High School. They have all accomplished their goals: psychology degrees, BSN, naval officer enlisted in the Navy. My platform is port expansion. Reexamining shared revenue agreements with the port, possibly a parking structure, saving the infrastructure on Wainimi Road. Improvements made by the help of skilled and trained label, trained workforce, small business, bringing our city alive by tourism, which will include increased foot traffic for our local businesses. Advertising signs on the beach, supporting our local businesses a few blocks away, farmers markets, elderly and youth. Having some more inclusive and urban landscape for our seniors and disabled, our youth, a skate park, fun-filled play yard, and a play yard for the kids, that timer.
Thank you. That was perfect. Thank you very much for being right on time. Bobby, you're up next, one and a half minutes when you're ready.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bobby Martinez. I'm a local high school teacher in the area, and although I might be the youngest candidate, I've been living in Port Wainimi for 26 years, basically all my life. And the reason I am running for city council is because I represent the children and the students in our community. And these are the people whose voices have not been heard. They are the ones that have been most affected by the pandemic. And they are the ones who struggle the most in these tough times. They need a leader, someone who will fight for them and make the right choices for our city and our community. And this is why I'm running for city council. Because I am a teacher. I am a teacher leader, and I believe that I can make positive change and I can bring diversity into our city. And make the city overall a better place. Unfortunately, I can't see the timer, so I don't know exactly how much time is left. But I really do want everybody to know that I love this city. This is, this is my home. I have intentions of staying here for the rest of my life. And everywhere I go, I've made positive connections with the people here in the city. You know, whether they have a profession or they're homeless. But most importantly, I've been here for my, for my community by serving the students.
Thank you, Bobby. What I'll do, Bobby, for you is when we get to 10 seconds, I'll just let you know that we're at the 10-second mark on all the questions. Sonia, if you'd like me to do that, just let me know. Our next, our next candidate is Misty Perez.
Hi, and thank you for providing this and putting this together. I've been a paralegal for 17 years, and this has given me extensive experience, which includes problem solving, analyzing information, research, fact-finding. It's also given me experience with working with multiple personalities, egos, and different people from all different trades of life. I raised three children as a single mom and recently remarried into a blended family where I have two additional teenagers. In addition to doing city council and trying to hold a job, it's become a very busy time for me lately. And my top three goals for the city all correspond to investing back into our community. We need to create new opportunities for financial growth and long-term revenue stability. We need to invest in our small businesses and ensure growth and longevity. Part of that will be to streamline the permit process and make it easier for businesses to open and grow. Small businesses are a vital part of our city's success. We need to develop community outreach programs for at-risk age groups. If you look around our city, there isn't much to do for certain young adults. This age group is the most at risk for criminal behavior, and we need to direct their energies towards more productive avenues. And finally, we need to create a crisis intervention team to assist our police department with mental health and drug addiction calls. That's the most, the majority of the calls that they get, and they have no backup assistance and follow-up to deal with these people. And they need special attention, especially our homeless. We need a liaison from the crisis team to work with homeless community, assist them with any necessary treatment and getting them into bridge shelters.
Thank you, Misty. Going to have to stop you there. Our next candidate is Will Burke. Will, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, David, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. You know, four years ago, Wainimi was struggling with finances, management turnover, and reputational concerns. And today, I think we can say that none of these are true. Today, we continue to enhance new partnerships and we're building on a very solid financial base right now for our future, while at the same time doing everything we can to keep our citizens safe. We passed for only the second time ever a two-year budget in the black and on time. And after years of neglect, we signed two three-year contracts with our police union and our SEIU employees. The SEIU had actually gone more than 10 years without a valid contract. We've added new police vehicles and other public safety items while hiring and training civilian personnel to aid our police, allowing our officers to spend more time on the beat. We're the first city in Ventura County to carefully allow, monitor, and regulate a very successful cannabis industry, but it's not been about cannabis alone. Our citizens themselves stepped up to the plate and agreed to an increase on the sales tax on dollars spent here in our city of Wainimi. We also continue to benefit from our partnership with the port, and I intend to help lay the groundwork for smart green growth as we continue to develop that partnership. I promise to remain focused on tomorrow's challenges, including unfunded liabilities, aging infrastructure, our homeless problem, and improving the quality of life for all our citizens.
Have to stop there. Thank you. Our next candidate is Sylvia Munoz.
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this. Mayor pro temp for the city of Port Wainimi. And I could say that we have a harmonious relationship on the city council at this time. I believe it's been with much work seasoned with respect, honesty, tenacity, and integrity. I've served the longest on the city council, and I'm a driving force on my own. My experience has jettisoned new ideas for community engagement, collaboration, and new revenue. I lead by example, tackling even the toughest of decisions and discussions with the best intentions and outcomes for the city at all times. Under my watch as mayor, I signed agreements with the Oxnard Harvard District, bringing more than half a million dollars just alone through the community benefit fund for our community. I've added strategic direction to our city's Measure U for millions of dollars added to the bottom line in future years as well. I've been instrumental as a strategic consultant for the last base realignment, keeping MBVC as a strategic partner for the 21st century and keeping jobs and military local. I've created lasting legacies for Port Wainimi, our region, and this country. And I'm your champion for keeping police local, local jobs, and port collaboration and growth. I'm here to serve you as a voice of reason for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia, we're having a little trouble hearing you. If there's others in your household using Wi-Fi, you might ask them to stop so that you get 100% capacity. But we'll keep moving on, and we're going to go to our first question. Will, you'll be up first on this question. Let's start talking about land use in Port Wainimi. And Will, how do you feel about the vacant market street land? Should that be, and how do you think it should be developed for the future?
Well, that's only one of two pieces that's left in the city. And that piece of property, in my opinion, needs to be sold and developed. And right now, the best partner to do that with is the port that can utilize that land more effectively and increase their revenues, which in turn increases the revenues for the city.
Thank you. Up next is Sonia. What are your thoughts about using the market street land?
My thoughts on doing that market street would be, I would have potentially wanted our skate park there, but it is a valuable piece of property. I'm for port expansion. Again, I want to see a two-to-three-story structure for cars. If we can revamp like they promised years ago for, you know, developing our Wainimi downtown area, we need to bring more traction to this town. If we can have a, you know, restaurants and coffee pot, you know, coffee restaurant, you know, all these good things that will bring revenue to the city, that would include that piece of property. Again, I would want to develop that for parking structures so that we save our infrastructure on our roads, but it's a very expensive piece of property. That's my take.
Okay, thank you, Sonia. Sylvia, same question to you. What are your thoughts about development of the market street land?
I believe it's going to be a development for generations to come. We have to be really smart about the growth. I'm all for port expansion and really do believe that they could be a very necessary collaborative member using the location wisely. I know that we don't have many places to expand for the city, so we're trying to do perhaps infill with residential units as well as try to help bring about some of the change along Victoria Avenue. But most importantly, this piece of property is one of those that we need to look at for investment for the future. And I'm all for helping the port engage in that future growth and expansion, whatever they would need, in order for them to keep the jobs local and bring more revenue to our city bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby, same question to you. What are your thoughts about the market street land and development?
Well, that market street property is extremely valuable, and as it's mentioned as one of the two properties that are left in the Port Wainimi city, I think it should stay within the city. And as an advocate for students in the community, I believe we should build a park there and maybe a combo park recreational area where also businesses can occupy that area so that it's not just a park, but also a place for businesses to grow. And that way, we can continue to provide really great recreational places for our students and our children in the community.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Misty to wrap up this question. Your views about the market street land, please.
I agree. It's very valuable, and I would not have a problem with the port taking over that area, but I believe they need to give back something in return. I know that we have an agreement with them that we would like to extend past the 2000, the agreement that it is what now. And I know there's property that they do not use, it's along the lighthouse walkway that we could put to use for our own self in improving the beach community and bringing in small businesses.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next question. Bobby, you're going to be up first on this question. So share with us your vision for beach improvements that will not be impacted by climate issues. And in particular, are you in favor of building a hotel on the beach?
I'm not necessarily in favor for a hotel on the beach. I think what's, what would be really great would be to see a lot of volleyball courts on the sand and maybe a playground for students and children. And focusing on improving the beach overall in general, you know, the pier and the walkways. So that's pretty much what I would do.
Okay, thank you. Misty, same question. Your vision for the beach, dealing with climate changes? And are you in favor of building a hotel on the beach?
I'm in favor of growth, but I would want controlled growth. I do not want to jeopardize the views that many of our residents have that live out there. But there are areas where we can expand and improve. A possibility of a small hotel, not, no longer, no higher than three stories. But I do believe we need to improve that area. We make it for tourists and for our own community, providing more small businesses for work for our community.
Thank you. Sonia, same question to you. Your vision for the beach and a hotel?
My vision for the beach, I would love to see a play yard designed with coral reefs and, you know, teeter totters and whales and dolphins. Again, for tourism, build memories with our kids here at the beach. We have four swings. I'd love to see also a recycled mat that takes, that is good for the handicapped and the disabled all the way out to the shoreline so that they can take a minute and breathe. There's nothing that'll help them do that now. You know, I'd like to, you know, take the top off of Surfside Restaurant and have a nightlife where we can all go out and enjoy. That would only put it up to a second tier. You know, rooftops are very common in beach areas. You know, Wainimi Beach is a place to attract tourists. I know hotels wouldn't work because the coastal commission will probably not want that or accept that. So my vision is to improve our beach. Those mats are so easy to get a hold of, and it will help our elderly make it out to the shoreline. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia, your vision for the beach and a hotel?
Thank you. So I spent several years on state tourism, and I know definitely what brings people in, and you have to have the amenities and infrastructure to support it. I'm not in favor of a hotel that destroys the view corridor, and that's why I voted down the project that was set to, to be a six-story building. That's not necessarily my vision for Port Wainimi. It would have destroyed quite a bit of the corridor down here. But I really am interested in providing upgraded beach amenities. We need that incremental revenue that tourism brings, and so we need to create those opportunities, whether it would be additional soccer tournaments at the beach, other things that the community residents can look forward to, like more movies in the park, and some of those projects that would not only bring folks down to the beach for an hour or two, but they actually have to spend several more hours in order to be a benefit for the community's investment. So I'm all for including additional infrastructure and upgrades, as well as looking forward to bringing more tourists to the beach area. Thank you.
Thank you. Will, we'll wrap up this question on beaches with you.
Thank you very much. The beach is critical to the city. There's no doubt about that. And the beach draws quite a bit of attention, not only from outside of the community, but particularly around the beach community itself. I think when we talked about development of a hotel there, there were far too many open-ended questions, and it just did not seem that the information was there for us. I'd like to see another restaurant, maybe even two. And if perhaps we do it by adding a second floor to the existing restaurant, that sounds all the better. We need to continue to negotiate with our regional partners for a reliable source of sand. We have to protect our beach by continually re-sanding the, from the effects of the erosion that continues to take place there. The beach festival, by all means, needs to come back and perhaps even add another festival to the, to the beach area to draw in more people, but make it also very community-oriented for us Wainimians to use as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sylvia, we'll start the next question with you. Let's go ahead and stay with land use, but this is actually outside the city, but it's within your area of interest, and that's Ormond Beach. So do you think that the Ormond Beach and the wetlands are an area that Port Wainimi should be promoting or preserving? Or do you think the city should just defer to Oxnard on its plans?
This is a beautiful project. We need to work together on this. It's a regional issue. It's not just Oxnard, and it's not just Ventura County, but we have to really be champions for preserving and protecting Ormond Beach wetlands. You know, I'm a board member of Ventura Land Trust, and we're all about protecting the hillsides and making sure that there's opportunities for folks to really know about the nature, habitat, as well as restoration. And I believe that Ormond Beach is a critical part between Port Wainimi and Point Mugu in order to keep active, as well as make sure that there are no buildings and no impediment upon that area. It's a beautiful source for lots of habitat, and we need to keep it that way. So I would be in full support of working together with Oxnard and with county officials in order to make sure that we preserve and protect Ormond Beach and the wetlands. Thank you.
Thanks. So Will, same question about Ormond Beach. Your thoughts about development there, working with the city, even the future with the power plant going away in a few years?
Yes, absolutely. We have to be sensitive to the politics in Oxnard and how they feel about their beach and their area. We have to acknowledge that. However, it is important that we lend our support in any way possible. We have to create this atmosphere of cooperation between the two cities. It's not a negative, it's not a negative relationship now at this time. And I believe it's getting better. And we just need to, again, work with Oxnard carefully. We need the Ormond Beach wetlands. They need to be developed, be a very valuable asset. People can stay in Wainimi and visit Ormond Beach.
Thank you. Bobby, same question to you. Your thoughts about working on Ormond Beach development there, working with the city of Oxnard?
Well, it's important to collaborate with Oxnard. And as a teacher, I teach my students to work together, and that's one of the things that we need to learn to do. We need to learn to work together with Oxnard because the more people that are involved and the more communication that we have with our neighbors, the better that we can, the better choices that we can make. And it's really important for us to take care of the environment. So most definitely, we do need to work together. We can't just ignore Gorman Beach. And I believe that together, we can definitely come up with some really, really great ideas to preserve the beach and to take care of the environment.
Thank you. And Misty, same question. Working with Oxnard, your thoughts or vision for Ormond Beach?
I absolutely believe we need to work with Oxnard on this. It's not something that we can just push aside and pretend that it doesn't affect us. It's right next to us, and it does affect us. Our people still go down to that beach, and it's a beautiful area, and it definitely needs to be protected. And working with our community city that's right next to us is how we get things done. So yes, we need to be in agreement with Oxnard and support whatever they need to do with their own property.
Thank you. Sonia, we'll wrap up with you. Your thoughts about working with Oxnard on the Ormond Beach, power plant, all the issues?
Yes. I'm, I'm for working collaboratively with Oxnard. The wetlands are central. We are protecting even our sand dunes. We, we've been looking for eggs. I tell the kids to be very careful because they are migrating this way. Once they take down that power plant, there'll be a big process to do. But I think working with Oxnard and saving our environment, it would do wonders for us to work with them. And excited, excited that we can actually utilize and continue walking down our beach and it be safe and clean and with the preservation of our, our birds, our little, little fluffy birds that are on those. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to start the next question. Misty, you'll be up first this time. And let's talk about global climate change. You are a coastal city. You are in danger of sea level rise. We're also seeing that carbon emissions need to come down before they become irreversible. So if you were elected, what policies would you support to curb local emissions? And what are your strategies for dealing with climate change?
I believe we need to protect our beach as much as possible, ensure that the sand is always there to make sure that we have our beach, whatever is necessary to protect the oceanfront property there. And I will support whatever propositions come up to help improve the environment.
Thank you. Sylvia, same question to you. What are your views, strategies for dealing with climate change and helping to curb emissions?
Build the infrastructure to support that.
Certainly, it's really important to continue with the sand replenishment because our erosion is a very important challenge each and every year, even though the sand replenishment may only be every two years. So we have to fortify and enforce then the, the rock redemptment and other things that we have down to protecting the infrastructure along the beach, along Surfside Drive. We have millions of dollars of investment down here at the beach, and so it's really important to know that sand replenishment is important. I worked with several of our state officials to get special grants to help reassure what we have down here a couple of years ago. And some, I'm all for a collaborative effort to, to engage others in the sand replenishment. I also know that through the ENGIE program and the projects that we've incorporated within the city, we actually have electric charging stations coming to our city for the first time. So we'll help then with people trying to limit the carbon footprint. And certainly, carbon emissions, we need to look at it as though, you know, the statutes are happening statewide, and so we need to look at what we put together locally. Thank you.
Thank you. Will, what are your thoughts about dealing with climate change and also reducing emissions?
Yes, I echo my fellow council member on that stating that, you know, the state is coming down with a lot of regulations and rules for us. And we learned today that in, what, 12 to 15 years are going to outlaw the combustion engine on all new cars anyway. So anyway, we have to encourage things like clean energy equipment. Right now, the port is in that transition stage where they're using forklifts and other equipment that is all electric. And as, we need to encourage them to continue doing that. But the electric charging stations are a big advance. They're matching up with the charging stations that have already been built by the port. There's two on Panoma Street and another one on Wainimi Road. And so we need to do our part in a global fashion, but we have to act locally to reduce our carbon footprint as much as possible without impacting the economic and the environmental life of our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia, same question to you about climate control and, or climate change and emissions?
Yes, so I think that, you know, I'm understanding the, the beauty of, you know, electric stations that are, you know, are going to be coming into our city. That also helps. Maybe perhaps building like a seawall, additional seawalls to protect our, you know, the erosion of the sand. I know that the Army Corps of Engineers has come in and, you know, has done different, I guess, projects and suggestions. But climbing, climate change itself, it, it changes all the time. It's, it's a real thing. So I believe that maybe seawalls will help assist, keep our Surfside Drive intact. The last time the sand left, it was pretty scary for the residents on Surfside One. Thank you.
Okay, we'll wrap up this question with you, Bobby, as far as dealing with climate change and reducing emissions.
Well, climate change is, it's a global issue, but it starts with every single person doing their part. Well, climate change is, it's a global issue, but it starts with every single person doing their part. And one of the main things that we need to do is we need to educate people. And that's why I'm a big advocate for public schools and making sure that students receive the right education. And so that they understand a little bit more about the climate change and what's happening. The reason the beach here at Port Wayne Nimi Road is actually because we have a massive underwater canyon that the sand falls into when it comes from Silver Strand. And this happened back when they they built the port. So in reality, we need to educate people so that they know that we need to recycle. We need to find different methods of transportation, promoting people to use bikes, walking. So it'd be nice to have more walking paths, make sure that they're clean and safe. Sometimes the walking paths here, even through Bubbling Springs Parks can be a little scary. And also at Miranda Park. So it'd be really nice to have, you know, walking paths, not just for people to walk, but also for people to ride their bikes and again, focus on educating people so that so they can understand a little bit more about what it is that global, you know, climate changes.
Well done. You got that in 15 seconds to go. So you're doing really well without a timer, Bobby. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, keep your post on that. So we're going to move on to the next question. Sonia, you're up first. Let's talk about the public safety. And do you support the Port Wayne Nimi Police Department? Are there particular programs and or training you think would be of benefit to the department? And what is your position on defunding the police?
Okay, let me start my timer because I have one here to my right. We need our our safety, our community is our police department is essential for our safety here in our community. I'm not for defunding the police. I realize that nationally, there's a big problem with that. My more concern is, I walk with my children. I know that it's safe in our neighborhoods. Programs for the police department to implement, I just feel like that if they don't need certain programs, and that would be totally on the city manager and, you know, again, working with the council members on what exactly is needed and what is not. I know that our our police department is the highest paid in our community. And I know that's a concern, but for me, I just want to make sure that we have them with the best knowledge, the best programs that are essential and to protect us as citizens. Not defunding, not at all. No, we need our police department and they've done a great job. I feel safe and thankful. And that's my skew on that.
Thank you. Bobby, same question to you. What are your thoughts about the police department? Are there programs or training? Training opportunities you think would benefit them? And where do you stand on defunding the police?
Of course, we can always have more programs to help facilitate the police department. I am pro-funding the police. I think it's important for us to support them. Because whenever there is trouble, who do we look for? You know, we call the police and we expect them to come and help us. So for that reason, we have to continue to fund the police. And at the same time, provide them with the right resources so that they can make the right choices. Right now, there is, you know, a big issue in the United States, as you guys have all seen in the news. And I think that means that we need to provide the right resources for police officers so that they know how to how to make the right choices when the choices do arise. And that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to defund the police. It just, if anything, it means that they they need more help and it's our responsibility as a whole, as a country to to help them and ultimately help each other. I think it's really good to have that feeling and that sense of feeling that the neighborhood is safe for our children and everybody in general. So more programs, fund the police and help everyone out.
Thank you. And Misty, your thoughts about the police department? Are there programs that you would like to see put in place for training and otherwise? And where do you stand on defunding the police?
I am absolutely opposed to defunding the police. I support our police department 100% as do the majority of our community and the councilmen that are currently now. And I believe they need assistance. We have short staff police department that deals with 22,000 people and each shift is about three officers. And we need more officers on the ground. They're overworked, which is the cause for the budget issue and the overtime that people talk about a lot. It's, we need more men, we need more man on the ground. We also need a program to assist for mental health calls. We need CIT programs to come in and follow up with all the mental health, drug addiction, homeless. The police officers can't do this by themselves. And right now, they're the only people that deal with these issues. And unfortunately, it's not a fix. It's a Band-Aid. So I do support programs to come in and assist the police department. Our police department is a community-first department and they're the only department that is actually CIT-trained. And I think we need to maximize on that and put more people on the ground.
Thank you. Will, same question to you about new programs for the police department, defunding the police?
Yeah, thank you. Our police department is our identity. They are Wayne Nimi. And I am so proud of them and I support them unequivocally, without question. There's so many things that they do for us in return that until it happens, we don't really think about it. Such as the nonprofit programs for seniors and the youth programs, the Christmas giveaway, all the many different things that the police do to really move into our community and interact with everybody. They continuously need our support in getting new equipment, new technology. I would like to see cameras on every police officer as well as cameras in strategic locations on all of our main avenues. We're a small enough city that we can literally eventually get to the point where we have cameras everywhere in the city. License plate readers, I've seen some of the technology that we already have. And it's really going to be cutting edge and we just need to continue to invest. The only thing wrong with the police department is we don't have enough of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Sylvia, we'll wrap up with you. Your positions on Port Wayne Nimi Police Department, training programs and defunding the police?
I'm 100% for our local police force. I'm not about defunding the police. We have the most diverse police department in the entire county. And it's really important to continue providing them the tools and the necessary resources. You know, just recently, we hired two new police officers, two young Latinos, one Latina and one Latino on the force. And we're giving them the knowledge and the information to go forward. We need our police department to be trustworthy members of the community, knowledgeable, engaged and effective in what they do. But we need to provide them programs. And one of the ideas I have is to enlist support, funding perhaps in order to get some new reservists going through a reserve academy that then they can turn around and become reserves within the police department. We have several officers that actually start as reservists and move on into officers or to stay as reservists. And that's how we actually balance our police department. It's really very important to be engaged and focused and to work alongside our partner groups because we do call in to to help us in our community of this size. We do work with the sheriff's department and the Oxnard PD. And so it would be engaged and focused in that realm as a region. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to start the next question. Will, you'll be up first. And let's take a, this question comes up probably in every city of the county, probably all over the state. And it's about housing, as you would expect. So Port Wayne Nimi has a diverse housing, probably almost half of it is rental. What do you see? What would be the policies you would advocate for for new housing projects? Would you consider greater density? That would mean higher buildings, three to five story. What are some of the policies that you would try to enact?
Well, we only have two parcels of land left in the city. One is the 1.5 parcel right in front of the port with well over 500 trucks daily coming and going from the port. The other parcel of land is on Victoria Avenue at Channel Islands Boulevard. And that too is, there are plans, but things have not developed yet for that. Housing is an issue. Many homes now are building what we might call granny flats in the back of their homes, et cetera. These utility homes. There's no other place for Wayne Nimi to build other than up. And to start even to do that, that means we have to demolish property that's already there, housing. So we've pretty much maxed out. The state has given us a mandate to build 125 new low-income units. And I'm at my wit's end as to determine where those units can feasibly be built. So the problem continues.
Sonia, please share with us your strategies for dealing with housing. Are there specific policies you would try to push? And how do you feel about greater density and higher buildings, multi-story, three to five stories?
I'm with Will on that. I don't see where in the community that would be without tearing down some shopping centers. Obviously, multi-story complexes kind of puts it like New York. I guess New York has all those multi, you know, multi-building, I mean, and there's their apartments. And so that would be the only way we can grow is up. I agree 100%. I just don't see where in the city that would fit. But if we can get something that way, we would probably have to consider possibly a park that that, well, we use all our parks, so that would be difficult to do. But we are very limited in our areas for us to build up. But I agree with having some buildings come in, multi, multi-levelled, to have affordable housing for those that need. Thank you.
Sylvia, what are some of the strategies you would push to improve housing? And what is your position on greater density and multi-story places?
I know just recently, we allowed Habitat for Humanity to build five residential units in Port Wayne Nimi. They had to go up. It's their two-story. And on a piece of property, we only could actually add five units. And so we are very landlocked within the city. We don't have much more room to grow. But we need to be very strategic and looking at a diversified portfolio for housing. We do have another project along Victoria Avenue that actually will build up. So it's supported by customer-facing organizations underneath as well as like second, third and four stories of units where people could actually live. So it's thinking smart and thinking outside of the box. We also have partners like Naval Base Ventura County, Port Wayne Nimi, that if they build anything that includes housing for their military members, it actually adds to the number for Port Wayne Nimi. So we could reduce that number down by being collaborative and strategic. I actually believe that we might even have to look at building higher in order to gain the units that we need and help shore up the the housing crisis that we have here in California. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby, please share with us your views about dealing with housing and do you support higher density and multi-story units?
Yeah, so this isn't, this is not an easy question to answer because we're limited on space and being surrounded by the sea and by Oxnard and not having a bunch of, you know, land to build more buildings. It is a little bit difficult, especially since we do only have 60 units for 62 and older. For, it's the Housing Choice Voucher Rental Assistance Program, which is formerly a Section Eight. And we also have 30 Wayne Nimi Village Homes rental. It's it's not a lot. I was thinking we can focus on what we already have and see if we can improve those. And then collaborate with the community and see if we can, we can get everybody's input to make better choices. Whether it is a good idea to build bigger structures. Honestly, right now, I can go either way. It just, it depends on what's best. We do need to build more homes for people and I think it's important for our students to have safe homes and a nice environment for them to do their homework, especially right now, since we are doing online instruction. You know, they need to have a nice home to live in.
Thank you. And Misty, same question to you. Your views about housing and density?
We have a very difficult problem in terms of housing. We are very limited on space. We don't have a lot of land. There are some areas by Port Wayne Nimi Road that we could possibly utilize and use for that. But that requires obtaining the property and then that takes time, obviously. I'm not a big fan of more apartment complexes or fourplexes. Usually that increases the crime in the area. So I'm reluctant for that, but that may be the only way that we can go. Because as everyone has said, we have, we just don't have the land in the area to put any more housing. And right now, we only have two programs. We have Section Eight and the Public Housing Program. And I know that the Habitat for Humanity has built a few homes. But as aside from that, there's really not a lot of options right now.
Thank you. We'll start on the next question. Bobby, you're up. This one deals with revenue to the city. There is a statewide ballot proposition, Prop 15, which will direct more property tax to cities and schools. And there's also the cannabis funds that the city is working on, the transportation tax, vacation rentals. Share with us your thoughts about Proposition 15 and cannabis and other techniques for raising money for the city. Where do you stand on these issues?
Yes, I'm pro Prop 15. As a teacher, I think it's important for us to get more funding for our schools, our public schools so that we can get more recreational programs and after-school activities. I think we've been successful with generating income from the cannabis tax. I do also think that we've been very generous with the port. And we've, we've been very, you know, helpful to them. And I think it's about time that they provide a little bit more help for our city, especially with some expiring contracts. And I think that if we combine all of those together, we would have more than enough money for the city. I think we also have to be, you know, smart with our budget. I think the city's, for the most part, has been doing a pretty good job. I've taken a look at the budget these past couple of years and I've seen the the next ones that they have ready. It would be nice for us to educate our community on those on those budget plans. You know, they're not that easy for people to read and for them to understand. It'd be nice for us to have some videos that might explain to our community. And that way they can also have, you know, a voice and an input. It's more than possible for us to raise enough money and I think that we are doing a good job.
10 seconds. Okay, thank you. And we'll go on to Misty. Please share with us your thoughts about bringing in revenue to the city, including your position on Prop 15, cannabis tax, vacation rental.
Yes, I am, I am for Proposition 15 because it won't have an effect on our small businesses. And it will just affect what I believe is businesses that are over 3 million in combined value. So I'm definitely for that. Anything that we can do to improve our schools, I'm definitely for. The cannabis dispensary tax has been a huge help in getting our budget in the plus. And I'm, I'm glad that it came in and was able to turn around. We were in a difficult situation before, but we're now doing much better. But we need to invest that back into our community. We need to invest back into our small businesses. We need to grow small businesses. There are many spaces that are empty in our shopping centers. And I would love to see more buildings being filled up with more businesses for more revenue for our city. We can't really do anything else in terms of larger options. But I definitely think we need to focus on our small businesses, especially during COVID. We need to take a look and find out what they need in order to be successful during this pandemic.
Thank you. And we'll go to Sonia for your thoughts about increasing revenue, position on Prop 15, cannabis, et cetera.
I actually am opposed to 15 because it affects our construction contractors in regards to their yards. I believe that the cannabis money that's coming into our city, we have to look at the bigger picture of things. If we propose ourselves to take that money and start saving some of that money that's here now, and I saw the numbers at our last city council meeting, that the money keeps growing and it's projected to be more and more. I don't know if we're foreseeing later down the way. We're going to have infrastructure problems. We could potentially have we could potentially have another disaster, another another uh view at bankruptcy because Oxnard is opening their dispensaries, is going to deplete that money that's coming in from cannabis. Our main heart of our uh existence has been the port. Newly now is the cannabis. So we have to justify and look at that as a bigger scope, not quick to answer. Um, yes, uh, I believe that we need to save, 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 because we are not foreseeing down the lane. I'm glad we got cameras up at the beach. I'm glad that we're doing all this new technology. But in a rainy day situation, which I've experienced personally, there's no justification unless we learn that we need to save as a city.
Thank you. Sylvia, your thoughts on Prop fifteen and raising funds through cannabis taxes and other opportunities?
So I'll start with Prop fifteen. I'm not necessarily in favor of it. Um, I know it's going to take um all of the state to actually pass this, but I would not be in favor of it for for us here in Ventura County. I believe with the budgets that we have, we have to be smart about the money that we raise. Um, set aside some money for rainy days, set aside some money for infrastructure replacement and investment, as well as um pay our workforce a really great wage because we want them to stay at the city of Port Wainimi. And that includes both SEIU, all our members, our managers, and the police department. Uh, it turns of the cannabis business, we just recently heard from the chief that we could be approaching almost three million dollars in uh revenue for the city in a year. And we know that when the other cities come on board and start um opening up cannabis businesses, it might hurt the city. So we have to be really smart about what we're doing in the future. It could um entail then um putting a moratorium on future new businesses coming in for cannabis. And I'm all for cannabis two-point-O. That means actually being very creative and uh working together to identify solutions in order to not have that revenue erosion. But I know that we have been blessed to have cannabis, as well as Measure U, come on board to help our community um stay in the black. Thank you. In the revenue, you mean, I mean.
Thank you. Will, we'll wrap up with you. Your thoughts on Prop fifteen and raising revenue via cannabis, vacation rentals, trans tourism?
Thank you very much. I'm absolutely against Prop fifteen. Uh, it's a first step towards eliminating Prop thirteen. Uh, increasing the commercial property taxes means that they will pass that on to the uh stores in those uh in in those shopping centers, and the stores will then increase the price on us. Uh, I just don't think it will work. We've probably paid enough taxes now. As for the cannabis companies, yes, uh, they've been a real boon for the city. And uh we very much uh appreciate all that they've done for us. Um, Oxnard, when they come online, well, they, the the very week they announced that uh they were open for applications, we had one of our cannabis companies move their location and move around the corner and decided to stay in the city of Port Wainimi regardless. Uh, yes, the cannabis companies will come under uh stress and there will be some uh financial readjustments, let's say. But we have to look for other targeted investments, develop new sources of revenue, not just uh the cannabis. Keep in mind that the port has given the city over twenty-six million dollars in the last thirty-five years. And then in addition to that, which is not included in that twenty-six million dollar figure, are the four hundred jobs that are created for Wainimi residents out at that port. So again, that, we we need to learn where the jobs are and how to help uh those jobs. Thank you.
Sylvia, we'll start with you on the next question. Let's step back from policies right now and get into a little bit more about your own personal priorities if you were elected. What would be a couple of your top priorities? And also Sylvia, will you share with us what you think separates you from your opponents?
Okay, so my top priorities are to um implement the city vision. We have quite a few strategic initiatives underway. We're just wrapping up our strategic plan. We have a Parks Master Plan that's coming up, as well as an update to our general plan. All of these plans need to be executed and implemented, and that's the heavy lifting. And so I'm here as, you know, um a champion for all of that. I worked for Fortune One Hundred, as well as one of the largest nonprofits in America. And I have that background and expertise. I also have an MBA in finance with an emphasis in finance from Cal Lutheran University. And my MB and my um bachelor's was in business administration. So I'm here to really help shore up all these items for the city. That's one area. The other is increasing collaboration with strategic partners like the Navy, as well as the port, and being a champion for local jobs, including local police and the military. One of the things that sets me apart is I've been a thirty-five-year resident of Port Wainimi, and I'm on the council for, this is my twelfth year. I've served as mayor three times and is mayor pro tem, currently in that role as mayor pro tem. And I come with the institutional knowledge and the experience that um is very much needed and warranted on the city council now. Thank you.
Thank you. Will, same question to you. Some of your priorities if you are elected? And what do you think sets you apart from your opponents?
Well, again, uh, I feel experience does make a difference. Uh, and my many years of working uh in the, in the industries locally here and around the world has uh given me a a more globalized view that can be applied in a a smaller e- region like our own. But my number one um goal, public safety, and it'll always be public safety. Second would be strategic economic development, uh targeted investments with the money that we're now making so that our money continues to create growth. And uh we do need to worry about our unfunded liabilities. We are uh experiencing uh upwards of two to three water main breaks a month. And uh we have forty, fifty-year-old uh water pipes, et cetera. We have to make some big-time infrastructure investments, and we have to have the money to be able to do that. So I will be looking forward to helping this city build a foundation through infrastructure.
Thank you. Bobby, what are your priorities if you're elected? And what do you think sets you apart from your opponents?
Well, what sets me apart is I'm, I'm one hundred percent Port Wainimi native. You know, I've been living here all my life. Um, I'm diversity. I'm I'm Hispanic. My first language is Spanish. I grew up in in the community. I went to all the schools. Um, I'm a, I have my bachelor's in mathematics and uh pursuing my master's in mathematics. So I'm all math and I'm all about the numbers and and that's what I teach my students, you know, to think logically and understand what's going on. And if if I'm on the board, if I'm in the city council, one of the things that I can assure you is that I'm going to be teaching my community. I'm going to be making videos. I'm going to be educating everybody and making sure that there is transparency between us and and everybody here, not just including the the children, but everybody. Um, I I want to see the businesses grow. Uh, I'm also a small business owner. Uh, I remember having trade wins just down the street. You know, I I like to see another grocery store. I like to see more businesses on the beach. I I I'm pro-growth. I'm pro-people. Um, I, like I said, I I take a look at the numbers and I explain things. Um, we had just mentioned that cannabis has brought, is is expected to bring three million dollars in one year, while the port um is averaging less than one million. And that's considering that the port is so big and does so much work. So definitely finding more ways of bringing in money so that we can create more recreational activities for our students because we basically don't have any recreational activities in after-school programs right now.
Okay, thank you, Bobby. And we'll go on now to Sonia for your thoughts about um what would be your priorities, what you think sets you apart from your opponents?
Well, what sets me apart from my opponents is that I've been a small business. I know the ups and downs that we've experienced, that we couldn't afford to keep it, but we couldn't afford to let it go either. And we trucked along through the recession two thousand and eight. You know, our foot traffic was essential. Um, when they developed, when they said they were going to develop the Market Street area, we were like, great, that's going to help us. You know, programs for our youth, there's nothing for them to do. I am in agreeance with everybody that's spoken tonight. There needs to be some kind of a skate park, some kind of activity where it keeps the kids out of trouble because I'm pretty sure the cameras will be there to make sure that there is no crime. There's no guarantee that there won't be. But those are all things that will benefit us as a community. Um, the recs uh department did this whole survey. I participated. I love the idea of revamping all the parks. You know, families, small families are are, I mean, their children growing up in very limited places to go. Um, if some of this cannabis money that's supposedly coming in in the groves over three million dollars, can't the city also make some kind of a a a fund where when businesses are in trouble, like now with COVID, that they actually loan some of that money with a low interest rate to help our existing business from not closing their doors? You know, I'm a, I have a passion for customer service. I, I have done so many things over my lifetime. I am fifty-two years old. I am now r-raising my boyfriend's two children. Uh, there's my.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And uh Misty will wrap up with you. What are your priorities if you get elected? And what do you think sets you apart from your opponents?
What sets me apart? I'm not a native to Wainimi. I've only lived here for six years. I've made this place my home with my children. And um I love this city. I I've never owned a small business, but I've been a working mom. I've raised three children for the past ten years as a single mom, so I understand struggle. I understand uh what it means to suffer. I understand the difficulties that a lot of our residents are dealing with. During my campaigning, I've spoken to over eight hundred people and I've connected with our community and and talked to them about what they need, what Port Wainimi means to them, where their struggles are, where their needs are. And I think investing back in our community is the most important thing we can do. Small businesses need assistance through this uh through this COVID. We need to make more youth programs, and we need, public safety is a big priority. We need to assist our police department in helping with some of the struggles of our community, which is mental health and drug addiction. And I think we just need to focus on making Port Wainimi the friendly city by the sea and just keeping towards that and making sure that we live and breathe and interact with our our fellow citizens as that every single day. And I think we need some help in some areas in that regard, uh but otherwise, I love the city and I just want to see it strive.
Thank you. Misty, we'll go ahead and stay with you and start the next question. Several of you have talked about the port. The revenue sharing agreement will expire soon. So tell us your thoughts about dealing with the port and also dealing with the emissions and what you think should happen there. So Misty, please share with us your thoughts on the.
The port, yes, um, we are the host city, and I think that's an important relationship that the port needs to remember. Uh, we, it does expire and and I think we need to increase that. We need to extend that contract out. And they want a piece of property that is very vital to Port Wainimi. And I think uh we can come up with some agreements uh that will benefit everyone. And I think they need to work with us in 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 that regard. I know that we provide them with uh police support, that monitors, patrols the port. So it needs to be a working relationship, and they need to recognize that we are an important part of this relationship.
Thank you. And we'll go to you, Sylvia. Your thoughts about when the uh existing revenue sharing agreement expires and what you think about some of the emissions and uh environmental controls that should happen there?
Probably if you take a look at uh why the city is here and why the port is here and why the Navy is here. It's a very important uh three-way relationship that we have. And so we need to build upon these relationships and develop new opportunities for all of us to coexist. Collaboration is going to be key. Several years ago, when we were both in a the lawsuit, and one of the things that was added was three years onto the current agreement uh with the city and the court. And it also brought the community benefit fund, depending on what the revenues were for this, for the port. And so we've effectively looked at how we could ratchet up and actually increase some of the revenue coming into the city. I believe it's going to be really important to put that on the table for the this next go-round, especially do you really understand the growth of the port is going to be vital for the city, vice versa? And we need to engage the military as well in this consortium to make sure that we're looking at the best possible solution because it's going to be here past all of us living in going to be for generations to come. And so that's going to be really important. Another thing too is to support the port uh with anything that they do that's green-oriented. You know, moving the dial and making sure that they're implementing all these items that are going to be um really cost-effective for us.
I have to stop you there. Um, you may be having some internet trouble again too. But uh we're going to go on, and Will, you're up next. So your thoughts about dealing with the port, revenue sharing agreements, emissions?
Well, thank you. I do understand that there's thirteen years left on the contract. And uh I do understand also that the city is going nowhere. We're going to stay right where we are. But unfortunately, the port is too. They're not going anywhere either. We have to find a good way to cooperate with each other. I don't think either party deserves something out of this relationship. We both deserve to work together and to make for the best uh uh conditions that we can. Again, four hundred citizens of the city of Wainimi work at the port. And uh last year, uh the amount that was given to the city by the port was two million dollars. Now, we don't expect that two million to come every year. They had a great year, but we do expect substantial amounts, and it will continue. Keep in mind that over twenty-six million dollars has been given to the city over the last thirty-five years. As they continue to grow, they continue to give us more money. Thirteen years is not very long from now. Think back thirteen years in your own history, not very long ago. So we do have to start creating partnerships and understanding between each other. Thank you.
Thank you. So uh Sonia, your thoughts about dealing with the port and also any environmental concerns?
Okay, so dealing with the port, I I I I foresee, I envision a multi-levers, a multi-level structure in that port somehow to save our infrastructure on our road. It's been damaged year after year after year, and it starts to deteriorate. Um, I believe that I stress reviewing those shared revenue agreements with them, working collaborative with them. I agree with Sylvia. Um, you know, uh, the emissions part of our lives is continual. There's pollution. Uh, we are not like downtown L.A. where it's totally encapsulated. We've got the ocean breeze. It's whips it out. Uh, but it doesn't change the fact that there's emission problems. I believe that good fences make good neighbors and that unfortunately, with all the money that came in last year of two million, I don't see that happening this year. That's why we, I stress we save because we were shut down for COVID for three months. And I think that the numbers will reflect uh by the end of this year on our budget because they're not moving cars. Nobody was working. Um, and I foresee that being just slightly different for next year. So I just believe working together that we can, you know, find a solution to the problems of the finances, the revenues that come in from the port as they are our our main contributor aside from cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss, uh Bobby, we'll wrap up with you on this question. Your thoughts on the port and the environment?
Well, the the port is a really big part of our city. It's it's in our name, Port Wainimi. And you know, as they being a business, you know, and it's important for them to take care of their area of our city. Um, unfortunately, it's, uh, shipping is one of the dirtiest industry industries by that. They're one of the greatest polluters, um, which is again, one of the reasons why I stress education and the importance of educating people. So maybe more local shopping and we need, we need to have a good, you know, communication with the port and become friends with the port so that we can help each other out and ultimately make the city a better place and make the port a better place. Educate and, you know, work together is what's most important.
Thank you. Candidates, I only have time for one more question if I shorten us down to one minute. So I'm going to ask the timer to reset for one minute. And this is a a straightforward question. It's come up in years past, so I think it's good for the audience to learn more. Uh, Will, you're up first, and the question is um to all of you, is anyone married to a city employee or have a relationship such as that? And if so, how would this impact your ability to make council dish uh decisions? And if you don't have that kind of relationship, do you have any thoughts about what's the proper role in that regard? So Will, we'll start with you.
Um, no, I'm not married to any employees of the city. Uh, and I'm married to the city itself. And I, that's all I have to comment on that. I did want to make one point that I neglected to make my last question. And that was, you know, the port has installed clean air monitors placed in schools around the outskirts of Port Wainimi and measuring the air quality. And it's zero.
Okay, thank you. Sonia, same question to you. Any relationship with city employees? And if so, would that impact your ability to make decisions?
I am not married to anybody at the city, although I've lived here for almost twenty years. Being on my counter at my store, I built relationships with everybody in the city. But no, I, I am not married to anybody in the city. I believe that was your question. So unfortunately, or fortunately, like Will said, you know, this is our community. This is our friends. These are extended people that we've known. So we are like, this is our, our city. These are all our extended friends and family. And this is our community.
Thank you. Sylvia, any relationship with city employees? And if not, well, if yes, would that impact your ability to make decisions? And if not, do you think there should be any concerns with such a relationship?
So I don't, I'm not married any city or have I ever been
Yeah, I'm sorry Sylvia, we're really not hearing you anymore.
I did he just nor any information sharing on issues. And I would strongly
I think we'll have to stop you there Sylvia, you know, just hope that you can get that fixed up. Okay. Bobby, you'll be up next as soon as that audio gets I think somehow Zoom is running slow.
Probably impacts mine, sorry.
Okay, Bobby, same question to you. Any relationship with city employees? How would that impact your ability to make decisions? Do you have any concerns about other people having relationships with city employees?
No relationship with city employees. I'm not married yet. I still feel like I'm pretty young and I have a lot of ambitious goals that I'd like to accomplish. And that's probably a really good quality that I have, being young. And because I can bring a different flair to the city. Tech, I'm tech savvy. I have a lot of great ideas. And I have a lot of energy and I want to give back to my community. And it's not like I haven't been doing it through volunteering as a volleyball coach. But I, I mean, they, they might affect other candidates, but for me, I have really good relationships with the people in my community. And I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you. And Misty will wrap up with you as far as any relationships with city employees. Would that impact your ability to make decisions?
So yes, I am married to a city employee. I'm married to a police sergeant. He's due to retire in a few years. But, so I understand that I have to excuse myself when it comes to police business from voting, which I understand and have no problem with. But I think I have a good insight in terms of being married to a police officer and what it is like on this end, more so than what most people do, have experienced. So I believe that I can, I can lend guidance or answer any questions that maybe haven't been dealt with before. But yes, I am aware that I have to excuse myself from that.
Okay, thank you, candidates. We're doing perfect on timing. So we are going to begin our closing statements. Sylvia, I'm going to start with you. You'll have one and a half minutes. So we'll hope that your audio comes through smoothly. When you're ready, Sylvia.
Thank you. As current mayor, pro temp, three-time mayor and thirty-five-year resident, I strive to provide the best quality of life in Port Wainimi. Once reelected, I will continue pursuing effective budgeting, supporting local police and enhancing community services. I'm committed to upholding job creation and, and retention and guarantee the city's involvement in strategic partnerships with Naval Base Ventura County and Port of Wainimi. I'm committed to a balanced, efficient city budget, identification of alternative water resources and sensible community investments. I'm a fiscal conservative who leads by example, always keeping your interests and the cities at the forefront. I'm a respected business and accounting professor at Auctionard College. I also own my own consulting company, Schnop Consulting Group. I'm a former executive with AT&amp;T Wireless on the national level, as well as with local organizations like Women's Economic Ventures that strives to help women build their own businesses. I am a single mom and a grandmother and I'm here to serve the next four years. Yo dese la mejor para nuestra comunidad y soy latina de la primera generación nacida aquí en Estados Unidos. Les hablo, hablo español y les pido su voto. I ask for your vote. Sylvia Schnop for City Council. Please reelect me. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Will Berg. And Will, when you're ready, please unmute yourself.
Thank you very much, David. And I would be remiss if I didn't remind everybody that I'm happily married to my wife Becky for the last fifteen years. And we've lived here in Wainimi for seventeen of those years. So I am committed to this community and I know who I work for here. I always put the health and the welfare of our citizens first. I've, I believe that I have helped instill an air of confidence about the future for our city. And tomorrow is going to be a better day and we are making it happen today in Wainimi. This is a different place than it was four years ago. And I want to keep those successes going. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Misty Perez. Misty, you have to unmute, please.
Yes, so I'm a mother. I am a career woman. I'm a wife. And I've been married to someone who public served for twenty-six years. So I've learned a lot of what it means to give back to your community and invest yourself in the people that you live near and wanting your community be a better place. I have, haven't traveled the world. I don't have a list of accolades. I'm just a regular citizen that loves the city and wants to see it progress. And I want to see it grow. And I want to see it be safe and a good place for people to raise their children and enjoy living. It's a beautiful place and I love this city. I just want to make this community a better place. And I have an insight to law that I understand legal issues. I understand legal documents. I understand different aspects of that. So I think that would be beneficial on the city council as well as just being a person who sees and hears what's going on in our community and understands what the needs of our people need.
Thank you, Misty. Our next candidate is Bobby Martinez. And Bobby, I'll ask you to unmute. And I'll let you know when you have fifteen seconds remaining. We'll, we'll get you unmuted. Hold on there, Bobby. So try it now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, you're fine. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, so I believe that there should be more teacher leaders helping to drive, make all the important decisions in our city. And not just here, but all throughout the United States. And I am one of those teachers. I am a leader. And that, that had to do because I had a lot of great teachers. Spanish was my, my first language. And nonetheless, I was still able to be a great student. I graduated from Wainimi Elementary, Yale Green, Wainimi High School, straight A's the whole time. I graduated with my bachelor's a year before most people. And I went straight into teaching and I'm really ambitious. And if you guys give me the opportunity, you'll see that I'm going to make a lot of great choices for our city. I'm running to advocate for students, for children, for a public education and making a lot of really great choices for businesses and for the city to grow.
Are you done?
Um.
You have thirty seconds.
And I basically want everybody to know that I, I, I am the change that I want to see. And if you guys give me that opportunity, you guys are going to see great things.
Thank you very much, Bobby. We'll wrap up now with Sonia. You'll have a minute thirty and we'll get you, ask you to unmute.
Mute. Figured it out. Got it.
Perfect. And when you're ready, a minute and a half.
A minute and a half. Okay, great. Ready. My concerns are on behalf of our citizens. I am passionate about our community and represent our residents, working effectively with our current council members that can, so that we can effectively identify problems, pursue new ideas and build solutions to ensure a brighter future for us all. Keeping our city safe and clean and ensure the quality of life for our community, finding involvement in ways to resolve, finding innovative ways to resolve our financial budgets, our police department, infrastructure, surrounding myself with professionals that will help us make a more educated, responsible decision for the good of our community. I believe that as far as our police department goes, I would love for them to have a program implemented for our high school at your, at, at-risk youths. I don't know that that's a project that, that they are foreseeing in the near future. But they are very impressionable at a young age, as well as Bobby strenuously wants the best for the students. They are our future. I worked with the NDR OTC program, a wonderful program here in Wainimi. My daughter was able to graduate. She's now a naval officer. Chief Hayes is a wonderful program going for our youth. And there are children that are, could have potentially been at risk. And there are several other good programs for our children. So that's what I would love to see for Wainimi.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all the candidates. One of the worst things about doing these Zoom videos is that you don't get to hear an audience give you a nice, well-deserved round of applause at the end of all of your statements. We do have a short little presentation, but I do want to thank you on behalf of the League for taking the time to run for office. Public service is a very high calling. We have a special presentation here. I'm going to just share my screen with you. And it's only take a moment or two. So please take a look. The League wishes to remind everybody to plan your vote. There are multiple options. Everybody will be mailed a ballot. That is every registered voter. You can return that through the postal service or through ballot box. You can drop it off at any of the forty, or any of the ballot boxes around the county. You can also drop it off at a voting center. Now voting, the ballots will start to mail out in about a little over a week. Ballots will go to everybody who has registered. The drop box is open soon after. If you have not received your ballot by October sixteenth, the League recommends that you, or we actually encourage you to call the Elections Division to find out where's your ballot. October twentieth is the date that the League is recommending that everybody return their ballots. So you know that it's been received by elections on November third. The last day to request a ballot is October twenty-seventh. One of the things we want to let everybody know about is voting centers. These are different than the old polling locations. You may remember in the past, you had to go to the polling location nearest you. Today, you can go to any one of the voting centers in Ventura County to cast your ballot if you choose not to return that mail-in ballot. The voting center will ask for your address and then you can just have a ballot printed right there on the spot that you can fill in. The last day ballots can be postmarked is November third. Don't delay. Get that ballot mailed no later than November third or hopefully early in the day or on November second. One of the most important things you can do besides voting is to make sure that if you mail a ballot in, that you sign it. It must be signed for every vote to count. Now, this year will be different. It'll be a lot of ballots that will arrive maybe after the third. As long as it's postmarked by November third, it'll still be counted up to two weeks later. So you want to get that in, but understand we may not have all the results on election night, even a day or two later as more ballots arrive from the postal service. There are some wonderful resources available to you. Where'sMyBallot.sos.ca.gov. You can go there, register. Every mail-in ballot has a unique ID and that'll be tracked as it goes from the Elections Division to you. And then when you return it, every step of the way, you can make sure that your ballot has been received by the Elections Department. Voters Edge is another option. By going to votersedge.org, you can type in your address and learn about all of the candidates in your races that affect your area. And also you can learn more about ballot proposition. So be sure to visit that. Lastly, the LWVVenturaCounty.org website has all of our candidate forums. This one will be posted up there within twenty-four hours or so. And you can go back to watch any of the videos at any time. So with that, I would like to thank everybody for watching tonight. I'd like to again, thank all of the candidates. My job is always to finish right on time. We're a minute or two early. So I hope everyone's pleased with that. Thank you for sharing your Friday nights with us. And before we go, I just want to do one most important step. Thank all of the volunteers at the League to help, that helped make this possible. Pat Essick is our head of voter service. Maddie, Elizabeth, Betsy, Cheryl, everyone helped tonight. I'm David Marin. On behalf of the League, thank you and good night. Don't forget to vote.